In progress.
All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tuesday, October 26th, City Council Meeting. Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Alderman Santi.
Here.
Alderman Glad.
Here.
Alderman McClatchy. Alderman. Alderman Strach.
Here.
Here.
Alderman Devine.
Here.
Alderman Miller.
Here.
Harvind Bishit here, by the way.
Who did it?
Harv, Alderman Harv.
Oh, thank you.
All right, please stand some place. Congratulations.
To the light of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands alone nation under God, indivisible, with every being and every creature.
All right, for the first portion of the meeting is public comment. This is for public comments that are items that are not on the agenda this evening. So if you have a comment to say that is, once again, not on the agenda this evening, you're more than welcome to step up to the podium, state your name and address for public record. Thank you, none. Moving on to item number four is Linmark Group presentation for the former central wastewater treatment plant. Before we get started, Derek, do you want to go ahead?
Yeah, sure. So, yeah, thanks, Mayor, and thanks, everybody, for accommodating this odd off Tuesday night City Council meeting just for the purpose, special City Council meeting just for the purpose of hearing this presentation from Linmark Group regarding the redevelopment of the former central wastewater treatment plant on Waukegan.
Can you speak up a little bit?
Yeah, sure. Actually, I'm gonna move over and want to use this microphone. See if you can hear me better. My microphone died out, so I can be frank for a second. Does it be better?
Yeah.
All right, great. Thank you very much for that. You didn't do that. I lost my voice over the weekend. So this is for a special meeting for a presentation by Linmark Group regarding a potential redevelopment of the former central wastewater treatment plant site on Waukegan. I just wanted to give some information about how we got to this point just for the public's information and to remind council members and any public that are watching online also. So just as a point of information, the site that we're talking about is approximately seven acres of the end of Waukegan Road, and it was a wastewater treatment facility for around fifty years, sixty years. And we recently, in the last few years, decommissioned that site due to basically mandates by the US EPA and IEPA. And if you recall, what we did is a construction project to expand our south wastewater treatment facility, which is down off the Charles and Miller Road. We built a new or expanded pumping station, which is just adjacent to the central wastewater plant site on Waukegan, basically to redirect all the waste that would have normally gone to the central plant down to the south plant. And a couple of years ago, once that project was done, we were left with the vacant treatment facility there at that site. And went through a process, actually, at that time, to put together requests for proposals. And typically what we do for these type of redevelopment projects, that was around the time COVID was in swing. Did not get a lot of responses for it. This June, what they actually didn't get any responses that went on to City Council. And then this past June, put together and updated requests for proposals that were sent out by Economic Development Director Doug. Actually posted a number of plates that made available for developers or potential developers to respond to. Linmark Group was deresponded to the RFP. We didn't get any other responses, even though there was other interest in the project. And I have to take to half this step back. One of the reasons we think and we heard from potential developers that there wasn't an initial response on the site during the first phase of reading of the proposal request was that it still had the structures on the site and that a developer was hesitant to engage in any sort of project there, knowing that there were still holding tanks and all the structures of the central plant on the site. So we actually partially had a grant, about forty percent, I think, of what was covered. Fifty percent was covered through a grant, and the city funded the rest of it to actually demolish the site and get it in the states that you see it today. So if you went down there and looked at it, there's no more sign of a treatment facility at that site. There were all the structures that were demolished. The site's basically, you know, in development terms, it's bad, ready for development. Fast forwarding back to this process with Linmark Group, basically the way the process was set up in our request for proposals, and that document's available if anybody wants to look at the RFP, just let us know, is that proposals will be received by a certain date, that a group comprised of the mayor and actually Troy, the raw Troy's, the reports director on the end, Ross Palrecki's our community development director, Doug Martin and the Thai is our economic development director, Phil Hobson is our parks and recreation director and responsible for downtown maintenance also in the tax and current finance district. Attorney Ricardo, who's not here tonight, and I said the mayor and myself, were on the review team to basically go through a vetting process with Linmark. We had them in to this room. We grilled them on quite a few questions on the project. They provided responses to our questions that were satisfactory enough for us to decide as a group that they were at least an appropriate or qualified developer enough to come to City Council. So this is the next step in the process. It's not a done deal. There's no agreements that are made. This is the very first step for Linmark Group to present their proposal in a public setting to the City Council. What would happen tonight is the City Council have an opportunity to listen to that proposal and the public have an opportunity to listen to that proposal, ask any questions that they may have of the project to get responses from Linmark. And I'm sure that some of those questions are a lot of the ones that we had as a development team and you may have also as the public. And provide you, as the public, an opportunity to present your concerns. I will note that this is the first step in the process, and so we're gonna go through a lengthy, and I'll explain that also. If they're chosen to move forward, this council chooses to move forward with this group, it'll be a lengthy process of redevelopment agreement, negotiations that deal with things like price of property, any sort of tax increment that the group gets back. Again, their proposal does not mean that that's what this council's gonna vote on at any time. It's a proposal of exactly what it is. And coming out of this meeting, we would be charged as staff to negotiate a redevelopment agreement with them that we would then bring back to this body as a council for consideration and approval. And if we can't come to terms on that agreement and the project doesn't move forward, if we do come to some terms, and again, it's gonna come out for this body, which would then be followed by zoning and all kinds of other things that have to do with the redevelopment. In terms of public comments for tonight, I consulted with the mayor. He can, he can say it also, but since I'm the one talking right now, I'll say it. Obviously, we want the public, those of you in attendance or representing people that can attend tonight, to express what your concerns or questions may be about the project. That's why we're all here tonight to learn more about it. It's not an opportunity or not a time to engage in all those questions. We'll take note of them as staff, they'll be in the public record. As we go through the negotiation and project development agreement process, we'll make sure that those questions get answered. We could certainly get back to you with answers to all those questions, but if you're asking the questions tonight, we'll make sure that that's entered into the record. Tricia's here, the city clerk, to do that. And we'll make sure that they're on our list to get answered as part of the redevelopment agreement, development process. I think that's it, right? We did have an opportunity just in tonight. I won't speak for Brad Friedman, who's the point person here tonight on behalf of Linmark, but they have an existing project called Wheeling One in Wheeling, which a few of us had the opportunity to go visit a couple Saturdays ago. And I think that, again, I won't speak for Brad, but it's certainly a place that you could go visit, whether or not you would get a tour or not. It's up to them, but it's a place that you could go look at and see a project at least that they'd completed, even if not the same type of project. They may or may not be doing it here in McHenry, where at least it's a project that they have done here locally. So with that, Brad, are you all ready to go? Introduce Brad Friedman from Linmark Group and to give his presentation. Thanks, Brad.
Thank you.
Wanna make sure this is working?
Yep.
Can everyone hear you back there?
All right, well, good to see everybody again, new faces. I am Brad Friedman. I'm from Linmark Group. And I'm really happy to be here tonight. I'm here with Peter Farquhar, who's with our general contractor, William A Randolph, and Mike Reclaw, who's the architect from Fitzgerald. Mike is the one who introduced me to this site. Came out to visit the site, met with a lot of you folks. And I was really impressed with the views that the site offered, the walkability to the downtown and obviously access to the Fox River. So as Derek said, I'm with the Linmark Group. The Linmark Group, they're really based out east. It's a third-generation real estate development company. I'm from the Chicagoland area, so I am in charge of sourcing new projects in the Chicagoland area. As Derek mentioned, we did just complete a project in Wheeling, Wheeling Town Center project that I'm gonna talk about. So the Linmark Group also just completed a project called The Sheldon, which is in Suffer, New York. It's a smaller project, about ninety units. Right when it was completed, it jumped up to about ninety-eight percent occupancy relatively quickly. It did extremely well. Another project that was recently completed, a little more exotic, is a Zemi Beach House and Spa in the British Virgin Islands of Anguilla. It's a boutique hotel with about a hundred and twenty-nine units. It's received a number of awards and accolades in travel and leisure magazines. And of course, the Wheeling Town Center, that a lot of people are familiar with here. Thank you for coming out to tour that property. The Wheeling Town Center was very similar. It was a village-owned land, RFP, it was a TIP district. We put on a presentation. We listened to what the village of Wheeling wanted. And we responded, and we gave them a town center that could serve as a central gathering place. Everything revolved around a plaza that could host public events, farmer's market, art fairs. We've got a three-hundred-unit luxury apartment building. We've got about a hundred thousand square feet of retail anchored by CNX movie theaters. And then there are a number of restaurants and other retail establishments there as well. This gives you an overview of the Wheeling Town Center, right off Dundee Road, right next to the train station. It had some nice built-in amenities. It was next to a park district facility, post office, village hall, police station, fire station. Heritage Park is there, Heritage Lake, there's a water park. And then we took advantage and created this municipal campus that again is revolving around this pedestrian plaza that could host public events and serve as a central gathering place for the community. Here are some pictures of the Wheeling Town Center. On the left, you see the pedestrian plaza. And then on the right, you see the entrance to the apartment building. And I'll go through a lot of other pictures later in the presentation on the Wheeling Town Center. So here we are, talking about the subject properties, which is thirty-three oh two Waukegan Road, former wastewater treatment facility plant. And what we did here is we tried to take advantage of the views, specifically out to the east. When I went to the site, once we walked around those storage containers and we headed towards the east, that's when I was really blown away with the views that were being offered. And I thought that we should take advantage of that opportunity. And so what we did is we penetrated this open courtyard with these two legs that take advantage of the views to the east, giving maximum exposure. And a lot of this, actually, I can't take credit for, but Mike Reclaw and the team came up with the concept. And then to the south, there are a number of units that would face the golf course, taking advantage of the open green space views. And then on the west side, right off Waukegan Road, that's where we would have the entrance. We'd have a little drop-off area. That's where we would have a lot of our, we'd have our lobby, our management staff, our leasing staff. We'd have some amenities there, like a fitness center, yoga studio, a business center, a conference room. And then to the north, up against these marinas, that's where we would have a lot of our backup house, loading, trash, boiler room, mechanical room, and whatnot. You see, the center of the property is a parking structure that would be a three-story pre-capped parking structure that would then be surrounded by the residential units. The nice part about that concept, about the concept of a wrapped building, is that you never see the parking garage. Nobody really wants to look at a cold concrete parking garage. So when you put the parking garage in the middle and then you wrap it with units, I mean, there's only one entrance, and then the entire facade is the apartment building. And I'll show you pictures later on in this presentation about how we address the facade. Here's a typical floor plan for the residential apartment building. You can see the blue is where the apartments would wrap around the parking garage. We've got the two legs out to the east. And then the courtyard, which isn't really identified here, you can see the courtyard would be in that middle area, would open up to Fox River. And then also, there is a tiered setback that's incorporated into this design. So you can see where the white areas are. We would start to tier back on the fourth and fifth level, which would then create these really nice dynamic balconies with views of the Fox River. So here is a mapping to kind of give you an idea of what the building would look like. So you can see, it's kind of hard to see, but the tier back on the east side. And then you can see the parking structure in the middle and how the building wraps around that parking structure. So this is a view from Fox Lake looking onto the project. This is just a, you know, conceptual view of what the project would look like. This is obviously very preliminary. Materials and colors would all be vetted out through the PUD process. Here's another mapping aerial. This is on the south side, showing the views of some of those apartments that would get views of the golf course. And then the drop-off area, you can see as well where we would have our front main entrance. Here's another rendering that was put together, a little bit of a zoom close-up. So what we're looking at here is about seven acres on Fox Lake, walking distance to the downtown, offering amazing views. We would do about two-hundred-and-eighteen luxury rental units with the open courtyard facing Fox Lake. It would be a five-story structure with an attached concrete parking garage. The main entrance, as I said, on the west side with the lobby and then a bunch of other amenities, such as a fitness center, yoga studio, conference room, open workspaces. And then the courtyard would be on the east side. And the courtyard would have a pool, a fire pit, a gazebo, grill station, and some open lawn space and lounge areas. Total project cost would be around sixty-nine million dollars, although we're really gonna try and lower that cost. I know construction costs are really high right now. Everyone's hoping those come down. And our TIP request would be somewhere around five-point-six million. Final cost would have to be determined based on any sort of environmental cleanup that would be required for soil remediation or bringing in additional soils and any sort of infrastructure requirements from a utility standpoint, water, sewer, sand, gas, electric, or anything required to extend that riverbank. So for our unit matrix, which is kind of in flux, but, you know, we're thinking around twenty percent studios, based on a report that came out from Tracy Cross. I noticed there was a lack of studios in the area, and they were in very high demand. So I do think that we would be a little bullish on the studio count. Right now, we're at about forty-five percent one bedrooms, thirty-five percent two bedrooms. Although I'm working with my leasing team at One Wheeling, I think we might balance that out and we might be closer to forty percent one bedrooms, forty percent two bedrooms. You know, the market is constantly in flux. And just when you think you have an overflow of two bedrooms and too many one bedrooms, the cycle turns, and then all of a sudden, it's, you know, the exact opposite. But we're constantly getting feedback from our leasing agents and our property managers to figure out what the right unit mix is and what the right size of those units are. In terms of the amenities, I kind of went over that. A lot of indoor amenities, like I said, fitness center, yoga studio, the conference room, the open workspace area, and then the courtyard of many, which would be the outdoor pool, fire pit, gazebo, grill station, open lawn space. So here are just a couple of pictures of the interior of the residential unit at One Wheeling, just to give you an idea of the quality of the finished product. And then here are some pictures of the amenities. The top left is the fitness room. Top right is a view of the courtyard with the pool. And then down at the bottom is the clubber. And I'll have more pictures later on in the presentation as well that I'll go through. So looking at a stabilized pro forma here, we're hoping to get a ninety-five percent occupancy rate. We're looking at about, you know, over four million of income. Got about one-point-eight of expenses, so we're hoping to be at about two-point-eight million for our net operating income. So from a financing standpoint, we would be looking to do a two-twenty-one D four loan through HUD. When people hear the word HUD, they automatically think of Section Eight housing, affordable housing. We are not doing any affordable housing on this project. The two-twenty-one D four program is specifically for market-rate, high-end luxury apartments. This is the loan that we did over at the Wheeling Town Center. And in fact, it was the largest two-twenty-one D four loan that was ever closed at the Chicago office. So hopefully that gives everybody some reassurances with regards to the financial capabilities of the Linmark Group. The HUD loan is very favorable in a lot of ways because you get a higher loan to cost. You get a longer amortization period to get low interest rates. However, the two-twenty-one D four loan program does not work for a lot of developers because most developers are merchant developers. That means that they build a project, they stabilize it, they sell it, they make their money, and they move on to their next project. That is not who the Linmark Group is. We are long-term holders. And so the two-twenty-one D four program works very well for us because we plan on holding on to the asset for at least forty years, if not longer, to collect that cash flow on a steady basis and take advantage of the good loan terms. So from a project timeline standpoint, as Derek mentioned, if we were to be awarded developer of record, we would then pursue a redevelopment agreement with the city of McHenry. We would hope to finalize that within the next quarter of twenty-twenty-two. We would then go through the PUD process, which we would hope to complete by the second quarter of next year. Then we would work towards getting our loan commitment from our construction lender in the third quarter. And then hopefully, we could break ground in the fourth quarter. Once we do that, we're looking at about an eighteen-month construction period to complete the project. Once the project is completed, it would take us about one year to stabilize the project and reach that ninety-five percent occupancy level. So project team, obviously, the Linmark Group is the developer. We are the sponsor. I would be the point person, working with the city, working with architects, general contractors, essentially quarterbacking the project. William A Randolph would be the general contractor. They were the general contractor that we worked with on the Wheeling Town Center project. They handled all of the infrastructure improvements. They handled all the construction aspects of the residential apartment building. They completed the core and shell for all of the retail buildings. We consider them a partner of ours, and I think they're fantastic contractors. They can definitely handle this project. I also have Mike Reclaw here from Fitzgerald. Mike is actually gonna step up and give a little talk about Fitzgerald, their history, and talk about similar projects that they have done. And then Burkadya would be our commercial lender. Burkadya is the company that we worked with for the Wheeling Town Center. They helped us close on our seventy-million-dollar construction loan that we obtained for the Wheeling Town Center project. From an affiliated standpoint, I wanted to talk a little bit about Goldaller. Josh Goldstein is my partner. He's the president of the Linmark Company. His father, Jeffrey Goldstein, founded Goldaller with a gentleman by the name of Richard Oller. So Goldaller is considered a sister company of the Linmark Group. Goldaller manages and operates over forty thousand units in seventeen states. We have a great relationship with Goldaller. From an asset management standpoint, from a property management, operations standpoint, accounting, we work with them very closely. Goldaller is all about creating a better place for residents to live. And it starts from the moment you walk onto that property and you see how well the property is maintained from land taping and maintenance. You know, we want to make sure that everything is clean. And then when you walk into the lobby, you're immediately greeted by leasing agents. And we have a number of amenities that we activate with resident events. And I'll talk about that more, but we just did a big event at the Wheeling Town Center. We brought in local vendors and artists. And we're constantly doing events for the resident in the courtyard, in the lobby, whether it's a donut party in the morning or a smores party at night. We do a lot of events. It's a pet-friendly community. We've got an event coming up where, I know this sounds crazy, but it's like happy hour for you and your pets. We bring in a food truck specifically that gives pets, you know, food and treats. And it's just, it's just really nice because everybody gets involved and like we kind of create this community that everybody really enjoys. I'm gonna let Mike talk very briefly about Fitzgerald and some of the projects that he has done. And then I'm gonna step up and go through some additional slides that show additional pictures of the Wheeling Town Center. Thanks, Brad.
Hello, very glad to be here. Again, my name is Mike Reclaw. I'm principal and director of design with Fitzgerald Architects. We're located in Chicago in the west of it. We're about a fifty-person firm, architecture and interiors. Last year was our one-hundredth anniversary, so to be a stable company, been around quite a while. Munklight Family Housing is probably our biggest part of our portfolio. We also do commercial work and interiors, and we've done projects across the country. Our backyard is Chicago, Illinois, and the Midwest. And we've been doing this for seven hundred years. A few projects just to talk about. One is the Mill Race Inn. You may be familiar with the Mill Race Inn in Geneva. We've been working on that project for a couple of years, studying that to... project for a couple of years, setting that to, uh, replace what was the Shutter Restaurant. That was a hundred-and-ten-duty department building with townhomes right on the river, very similar kind of context, really trying to take advantage of that, um, the quality of the river space for people in the community. A couple other projects, just to give you some sense of context, um, completing a project in St. Louis called Flats at Dorset Bridge, it's very much of this construction typology. It's a wrap building, it's a two-hundred-and-twenty-five-unit apartment building, parking garage, all concealed by the apartments, um, sort of engaging into the landscape, uh, and that's, uh, will be starting occupancy in the, so, uh, Midtown Square is a little bit more of an urban site or a suburban urban site in downtown Glensy, about a hundred-and-fifty units, uh, incorporating a lot more retail at the base and so forth, uh, but it, all of these projects are really about sort of organizing a building with the site. You know, we think that the outdoor space is important to the quality of these buildings as the, the indoor space and the character of the building. And we sort of think it's very important to engage the, sort of, uh, the design of the building with the context. So you've seen some of our design strategies for the site are about sort of flaring open the site so it opens the, the, the project to the site, preserving as much as the open space as possible, making all the residents have a great view of that. So that's about, as I had, you know, from a quantity point of view, I'd say that we have, any year, we probably have about two thousand, um, residential units, primarily apartments these days, uh, under construction. We're probably designing ten thousand or more units a year. So we're very adept at understanding these types of projects and looking forward to helping Brad bring this to a success. Thanks.
Uh, so now I'm just gonna go through some, um, more pictures. Before I start scrolling through all these pictures, um, as Derek mentioned, um, there, there were some members that came out to tour, uh, the Wheeling Town Center. Uh, for those of you that did not make it, you do have an open hand light and, um, e-everybody here in the audience, uh, invited to come out to tour, uh, the Wheeling Town Center apartment. I, I can stand up here for hours and talk to you about the quality of construction and the detail that we put into our project, um, and I can show you tons of pictures, but at the end of the day, when you are there, when you are standing at the Wheeling Town Center, um, you really get a sense for the, the quality that, that we deliver. And I encourage everybody to, to come visit the, the site. Derek, if, if, if any of these, um, audience members here wanna, wanna come tour it, uh, feel free to share my email, my mobile phone, um, I'm always available, I'm always accessible, um, and, uh, I, you know, I, I welcome everybody. Anyways, this is a, a view of the pedestrian plaza, um, at the Wheeling Town Center. On the right, you see C M X, the forty thousand square foot movie theater that anchors the project. On the left, you see City Works, and then off in the distance, you see the main entrance to the apartment building. This is a close-up of the apartment building. On the left side there, you see Arctic Spoon and Via, uh, this is a canopy underneath, um, or above that, uh, is part of the town center, um, part of the, uh, pedestrian plaza there. This is another view of the apartment building, uh, you see all the units, um, have, um, balconies, uh, we use a mix of materials, so, um, you know, to break it up because it is, you know, it's a large building, um, so, uh, different materials, uh, stone, brick, glass, balconies, um, again, to break up that facade. This is a view of the lobby, right when you walked in, um, on the left, there's a coffee, um, uh, station, there's a, uh, doorman desk, and then to the right is the, uh, the leasing office that, that's not shown in this picture. This is a view of the, um, clubroom, there's a pool table, there's couches, uh, there's TVs, um, everything is very open, uh, glass doors, um, to the right is the courtyard and then off in the back, you see there's a, a private party room, there's some sliding burner doors, uh, that you can close off if you want some additional privacy, uh, there's a two-way fireplace, uh, one side leads into the clubroom and then one side leads into the private party room. Uh, here's another, uh, view, uh, you can kind of see inside the private party room a little bit closer with this picture here. And then this is, um, a view of the courtyard showing the fire pit and the pool, and then here is another view of the courtyard, it's kind of hard to see, but, um, you can see, um, in the, in the distance, there's a covered gazebo kitchen area, there's grill station, there's, um, a turf area where people do cornhole and bocce, and then there's a cutting green in the corner, um, lots of tables, chairs, lounge areas, um, I mean, people walk into the courtyard and they're like, oh my God, I feel like I'm at a resort on vacation. Uh, here's, um, the yoga studio, uh, which is kind of cool, like, um, we do yoga classes, kickboxing, kickboxing classes, um, uh, some people bring in their private dance instructors to, to use the, the studio space, um, it's, it's really nice to get a lot of youth tenants, uh, you know, things to love, they bring in their private, um, weight trainers, um, do many sorts of, uh, programs. This is actually a picture of the plaza when we had some live music, um, we didn't have Smash Mouth, but, uh, you know, we'll work on that, um. And then here is another view of the plaza, you know, when it's empty and clean, you can see how, you know, it's plush with landscaping and lighting. So, um, that's really it, um, I know there are going to be a lot of questions and a lot of comments, and so, um, I think we can just, you know, jump into the Q and A if that's okay with everybody. All right, so what we'll do is have, uh, council ask any questions, uh, to Brad or his team, and then after, uh, council is completed with any other questions and comments, then we'll open it up for public comment. At that point, we will not be engaging back and forth, but this will give you the opportunity to express your concerns, as there will be other opportunities like planning and zoning, council, this is a long process, um, so I ask that you be professional, and, uh, let's go ahead and, uh, open it up for council questions, comments. I don't know.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, and I apologize upfront, I have to leave you for a seven o'clock appointment, so that's why I'm jumping first.
No problem.
So, thank you.
I'm actually leaving with you.
Well, we have, uh, we have nine minutes to leave. Um, thank you for your mix on the unit mix, um, I think that brings forward a lot of the concerns about your rent rate, that, again, I think these are aggressive numbers and I hope that you have the same ninety-eight percent occupancy that you have at One Wheeling. My greatest concern is the number of vehicles on Waikiki Road, which I'm sure you've been asked a hundred times. So in your material, you had, quote, one point, was it one point four vehicles per unit was your?
Oh, for the front end ratio?
Yeah.
Okay, um, actually, demand's a little bit lower than that, but yes, that's what, um, that's what the current plan calls for. I mean, at the end of the day, we're gonna have to hire a, um, you know, a traffic and parking consultant, you guys are gonna hire a traffic and parking consultant, they're gonna speak traffic and parking to each other, and then everybody will kind of agree, you know, where we need to be. Obviously, we base our numbers, um, based on similar projects that we have built, um, and we see what the demand is for parking count. A lot of municipalities make developers overbuild on parking, nobody really wants to do that, uh, because then what do you do with all these leftover parking spaces? Look at the city of Chicago, um, they have all this underground parking and they're like renting it out for storage. You know, nobody wants to be in that situation, but, um, obviously, we don't want to be underparked, so finding the right balance is key.
So with housing in mind, when I look at your slices of the building, so floor five is all residential and the parking ramp does not go to floor five?
Correct.
So residents on floor five have their cars somewhere, it's all fine parking, I'm assuming in there?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, um, and obviously it's clear, so they're getting material up and down. What's in the middle, what's in the hole of floor five?
Uh, it's, it's a, a parking deck, um, here, we probably go to one of the massings, and then that would give you a good idea of what it looks, it's just a, it would basically be the top of a parking garage. So there would be vehicles parked on the top of the parking garage. But no units would look into the parking garage, those are single-loaded. There's no, no windows on that interior. Oh, I just passed it, right there, so, so, 'cause no, units don't look into the parking garage, we can't do that, you have to have a window. So, anything that surrounds the parking garage is what, is what is referred to as a single-load hallway. So there's a hallway, but there's only units on one side, the other side is the parking garage.
So?
So if we go back to the site plan, and, you know, these are concept drawings, so, you, you, you don't really see this, but you, well, you can tell how the legs on the east side are double-loaded, right? 'Cause you can see that there's a hallway in the middle, and then there's units on each side, but then for the rest of the building, which wraps around the parking garage, it's all single-loaded, so all those units face out, they have a window facing out.
Well, I have for the moment, I'll keep?
Five minutes to spare.
Well, I, I don't wanna, I mean, I'm gonna take up all your time, so I'll go back to the mayor so someone else can ask, and then I'll come back.
All right, thank you, sir. Uh, any other questions, comments by council members? I'm looking, I'm looking for questions, okay. Thank you, Brad, for the presentation, and thank you for your time over today, you spoke briefly, excuse me, we wrote, we spoke briefly earlier today, I appreciate your time. I guess a concern, five levels, your thoughts behind the five levels and why that high?
Um, I think that two hundred units is the magic number.
Okay.
We've done smaller projects, we've done larger projects, I think two hundred units is the sweet spot, um, from a management standpoint, um, bringing in two hundred units, looking at the report that Tracy Cross provided, uh, there's clearly demand, uh, for two hundred plus units. Um, I think bringing in two hundred units gives you an opportunity to then enhance your amenity package, uh, you have the ability to offer more amenities when you have more units to absorb that cost of those amenities, including the pool and the fire pit and everything else that was mentioned. Um, so, that's how we really got to five stories, um, was to figure out like, okay, how do we get to that, you know, magic number of two hundred units? And then from a parking ratio standpoint, you know, how many levels does that parking garage have to be until we get to that, you know, parking ratio that's gonna satisfy the demand?
Because of Alderwood Miller and her time, I think there's definitely a question that we spoke of earlier today that should be, I just wanna make sure that you're here for this. When I look at the perspective of that land and you viewed it, and I, uh, I see it on the Fox River, and I see a semi-private country pub right next to it, I see your access to downtown very easily walkable and possibly an extension of the Riverwalk there, um, it's really an eternal, and I'm trying to think what's best for the city in regards to, um, why is it an, an apartment presentation and not ownership on that piece of land? That, and, and I, and I might be a little bit biased and subjective on my statement today, tonight, but when I see that, um, it's, it's very valuable piece of property and, uh, I would personally see it as an investment on one perspective here, and I just need to understand that, and it's really tough for me to understand going down that avenue as in regards to kind of any townhome, something else of that sort.
Yeah, and, um, you know, my, my answer is going to, you know, be the same as what we talked about earlier, um, you know, that's, that's just not what the Linmar Group does. I'm not saying that you are wrong in thinking that, you know, um, you want, um, some sort of townhouse project or, you know, whatever it is for the site. Um, that's just not what the Linmar Group does, um, they are long-term holders, um, they like the cash-on-cash, you know, return and the ownership of, you know, um, an asset. Um, this, this site plan would look very different if it were to be similar to the townhouse project on Waikiki, uh, where those units have their own private balcony and boat dock. This is definitely more of a community aspect, um, you know, apartment building which would then afford us the ability to bring in all of those, um, you know, luxurious amenities that you just, you don't see in condo buildings, you don't see them in townhouse projects, you don't see them in, you know, single-family homes. Not everybody can afford pool and a fire pit and a bocce, um, you know, um, uh, area or a cutting green or a yoga studio or a fitness room or a clubroom and a private party room, and, you know, when you have an apartment complex, um, and a management company, um, you know, that is class A and luxurious, it gives you an opportunity to bring in all of those amenities and take advantage of providing a community with all of those residents who live there. Um, you know, something that I didn't touch up on earlier is that, um, there's a random group of, um, people who live in the apartment building, and every Sunday night, they go out into the courtyard and they do a potluck dinner, and they all bring something different, and they just hang out with each other and they enjoy each other's company, and there is, there are a ton of these community events, um, where everybody comes out and, you know, they, they make friends and they, they create their own community, um, and it's, you know, it's really nice.
Yeah, and, and I'll, you know, and I'll grant you that, it's, it's not, uh, uh, I'm not taking a total elimination of an apartment complex, but in essence, you know, one of your, uh, projects that you showed us, the Navy's, the, the Wheeling One, which I will gladly accept your invite and get out of there very soon, uh, where, do you have retail below?
Yeah, so it's actually not below, it's, um, it's up to the side, um, so, um, I could go back to the?
Yeah, and just, let me, I can, real quick, Brad, my point being is that, even, you know, that would be a concept to look at there, but then you go back to Alderwood Miller, Ald- Alderwood Miller's statement about, um, traffic, and if you've got twenty, two hundred units, and now you got retail there, so now you got people coming in that don't live there, retail, and I, I would be interested to see, you know, traffic, um, study.
Well, we don't have any retail on this, uh?
I get it, I get it, that was my, I'm just trying to tell you something that I would look at and say, okay, it's apartments on top, so there's retail below, so now you've gotta be there in regards to thinking about the retail, but it can't be done there, at least I would have?
No, I don't, I don't think it's an appropriate site for retail because at that end, three?
And you can't get people in and out of it.
Yeah, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I, I, I don't think it's appropriate for retail.
I get it, I get it, and I, that's my point, I'm kind of agreeing, agreeing with you on that. One other thing, I just, uh, you expressed, um, in your presentation that you would hold the property for forty years.
Uh, in, indefinitely, really, um, you know, um, there's, there's, there's no plan to sell the property, um, most developers, that's what they do, they build it, they sell it, they move on, but that's not what the Linmar Group does, they are long-term holders, um, they build properties, they hold on to them, um, there's, there's, there's no, there's no sale date, so we never calculate IRRs because you can't calculate an IRR unless you have an exit strategy. There's no exit strategy.
Okay.
The strategy is to hold on to the asset and collect the income, pay off your mortgage, and, you know, make your twelve percent, um, you know, on your investment, and continue to be a part of the, you know, community. and, you know, make your twelve percent, um, you know, on your investment, and continue to be a part of the, you know, community.
Okay, thank you, I, at this point, I've no further questions, thank you, Mary.
Good. Uh, Alden Miller, you have another question for you?
No, I, uh, but I do have to leave, so I would just, you know, give you my comments, that I, I like the project. I think it, it fits where you're intending to put it. My concerns are obviously filling two hundred and eighteen units, but that's not my money working, that's your money working. Um, and really, my greatest concern is the traffic coming in at Waukegan, which traffic studies will tell us if that will accommodate or not. And my only other thought is, you know, emergency equipment getting down there, and I'm sure that you've worked on with the bros and.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I should've touched up on that, um, so, there's a path around this building. Um, the path is a fire emergency lane, which I'm assuming your chief of police, sorry, your chief, your, your fire chief, is going to require a lane that he can get a fire truck around. Um, so, but the, the path that you see, um, really would be, you know, more of a pedestrian path, no vehicles, it would only be for emergency use as you are referring to.
So that's the gray path, right?
Yes.
After the loop that goes all the way around.
Yeah, the gray path that goes all the way around would be the alert, the fire lane, and then the white path, um, right in front of the building, that would just be the, you know, the circular drop-off area for, you know, deliveries, Uber pickups, Grubhub, stuff like that.
Right. Do we have a fire truck that can service five stories? I know in the past that's been an issue.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, mine for the hospital.
Thank you.
Yeah, for the hospital.
Thanks, Brett.
Alden Harding's a yes on that as well.
Yeah.
We don't.
Oh, yeah, he would know, I guess.
Yeah.
So we have Alden and Harding, uh, on the phone, so we'll give them an opportunity, he's actually working with the department, so, um, I, thanks, sir.
Appreciate it.
Um, Alden Harding, do you have any questions?
Alden Harding, do you have any comments or questions?
Yeah, no, um, I like the plan, I'm glad, I'm thankful that, you know, they're looking at this property, but my same concerns with water traffic too going down Waukegan Road, and, you know, the amount of traffic and what's coming in and out of there, that was, that's my main concern, but, you know, the five stories high, you know, I, I don't have an issue with that, but, you know, it looks good. Um, you know, I, I, I like the idea.
Thank you.
Uh, Alden, go ahead.
Yes, um, I guess my question's for, uh, more Director Strange about, about Waukegan Street. Kind of when you get down there by D's Marine, it's, where does this, where will this property start with the street? 'Cause you go down there and it kind of just, you don't know if you're in D's Marine property or still on the road, or it's kind of, gets kind of narrow, that's what I'm trying to say, is that, so what's the street back there?
Yeah, Waukegan is kind of goofy in that some of it is right-of-way and some of it is a parcel that the city owns. So, long-term, it would probably be better for us to have a properly-planted right-of-way, uh, and an alignment that, that matches more exactly what we want to put down there, you know, we're limited as far as.
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
Yeah, we're, we're limited as far as pedestrian access to some degree, I think we have side one from one side of the street, not the other. Um, so, Waukegan as a whole, long-term, could probably be improved, better suit both the existing townhomes and whatever happens on this parcel.
Good, thanks. Any other questions, Kevin, Alden, go ahead.
Yeah. So looking at your business plan, uh, you expect the city of McHenry to give you the property, correct?
Uh, that is TBD, um, it all comes down to TIF incentives, overall project costs, um, and how much money is gonna have to be allocated towards, um, environmental cleanup. Um, I think that's part of the negotiation process. Um, like I said earlier, right now, construction costs are really aggressive and really high. We're hoping that, um, you know, they, they come down by, you know, within a year's time, you know, when we're ready to break ground. Um, you know, I'm happy to pay for the land, um, you know, as long as we can put together a financial model that shows my investors that they will be getting a twelve percent return, um, you know, we're, we're, we're open to a number of, uh, you know, different, um, approaches to how we structure this.
And with the transfer of this property, we're, we're also popping all the boat slips?
Well, that's, that's part of the negotiation process, yeah. But at the end of the day, they either want them, or do they want them to stay with the city of McHenry? I think that's just part of the negotiation.
I understand that, but I'd be considering the water period on the, on the, on the river and everything else that we've taken and, uh, had, uh, many years ago when we had larger developments, uh, where we had to go out and find boat slips, and, uh, we were lucky to have these, uh, again, this property was purchased, uh, besides the wastewater treatment plant. Uh, the reason why we have the slips and everything else is because that was purchased with the idea that, uh, the central wastewater treatment plant would be rebuilt, uh, at one point in time, until some people decided to tear it down because of the smell. Thing is, the new, new treatment plants, uh, are much, uh, more sophisticated, you don't have those, those smells and everything else anymore. But anyway, um, I kind of could see transferring some of the boat slips, but I, I think to some, we need to figure out a number of what we want to keep, because we're gonna need it in other, other spots, uh, any expansions that you do on the Riverwalk, or, or anything along the waterway. Uh, to be honest with you, I'd rather see, uh, owner-occupied type of, uh, development. We've got enough apartments, uh, going on right now, and, uh, this is a key piece of property for the city of McHenry. And I don't really feel that apartments is the way I'd like to see this property going. I really feel that, uh, we need, we need, uh, people that are gonna live there, that are going to be, um, invested in the, in the community, not just with rent, but, but also owning a piece of, uh, of that property. So, uh, that's all that we have for right now. I just wanted to, and I'm missing, I just wanted to add on, we, we have had those discussions, uh, it was kind of brought up as part of the interview or the initial discussion with Linmark, and we identified that there's certainly value in those slips, and what it took the city to acquire ownership of those, and, and, you know, I think Brad identified that they would evaluate how those would fit into their plan, and we have to identify and evaluate how they fit into our future plan, just as you just said. We, we, we know there's value to them, and whether or not they're conveyed or not conveyed, or whatever, we'll, we'll put in as part of the. That's just the value, and you also have to look at the availability. Yeah, sure. Uh, because there aren't that many at, at, uh, given times, uh, available out there to purchase, to bring to whatever project you're doing. So banking on some of that does not hurt.
I don't, I, just aside from these, I think it's important to note that, um, we've only purchased the Riviera Marina, the rights to Riviera Marina, we bought sixty slips, that doesn't count these, twenty of those slips we gave to the Riverwalk Place Townhomes, so we actually still own the rights to forty pairs, uh, for, for the Army Corps.
And these are night slips, so keep that in mind as well.
Yeah, those, yeah, those are the, those are the, yeah, permanent overnight Marina home type.
And day slips, we're allowed to play.
As many as you want, just the impact of the distance into the river.
Sure, day slips.
Like whatever parts, and those type of things.
Hey, you, you're looking, if you acquired these boat slips, what did you do with them?
Uh, they would be offered, um, to residents of the apartment building, um, to, um, lease them, and then whatever would be left over would be available to the public, um, for, again, leasing.
Not, not a significant amount of water traffic if you have down off these roads, coming in for however.
You know, I don't feel comfortable addressing that, because, you know, my initial thought is that if we have two hundred and eighteen units and there's sixty boat slips, then those sixty boat slips are going to be in high demand from the people who live in the apartment building, so I wouldn't think that there would be additional traffic generated, but, you know, I would leave that up to the traffic and parking consultants. Um, you know, that's just my initial thought.
It would be interesting what the income level in, uh, Wheeling is versus, uh, McHenry, uh, because I'm sure your rents are probably pretty, pretty close to Wheeling, which you're proposing here.
Uh, so rents in Wheeling are, um, a little bit more aggressive. Um, I actually was, I took a very conservative approach on my rents, uh, from an underwriting standpoint. Um, and a lot of that was based on the report that's provided by Tracy Cross, and then my own research of going out and looking at new construction apartment buildings, and what they were getting for rent for a one-bedroom or a two-bedroom.
I mean, even if you have all the, the amenities, that, it, it, it still comes to a point to where, uh, you can only charge so much. People are only willing to pay so much. I mean, you'll have a couple here, or a couple there, that are willing to pay whatever to get the amenities they want, but the average, uh, public is gonna wanna spend that kind of money, you know, taking it up too high.
I, I'm not, I'm not sure what you're referring to, to say that kind of money, I don't know what rent levels you're talking about.
Well, you, you look at nineteen hundred, two thousand dollars a month for rent.
Uh, so that would be for like a two-bedroom?
Yeah.
Um, and, you know, we're, we're getting, we're getting twenty-four hundred plus for a two-bedroom in Wheeling. And, yeah, you can argue that maybe Wheeling has, um, stronger demographics, but, I mean, this is a riverfront property. Um, it's walkable to your downtown, you guys have a great downtown, you have a great vibe. Um, I think these units are gonna be in high demand. I look at the new construction apartment building that was just built in town, there's like twenty-five units there or something. There's no vacancy, you, you can't rent a unit in that building.
Might be.
I mean, it's totally occupied, there is demand for apartments, and people wanna be transient these days.
Might be more of a demand for, for condominiums, uh, on this, uh.
There, there very well could be, again, I'm, I'm not saying that you guys are wrong in thinking that you want condominiums or you want townhomes, you know, um, it's just not, it's just not what the Linmark Group does, I, you know, um, we, we do class A luxury apartment buildings with resort-like amenities, and we provide really nice communities and better class of living. And a lot of people who rent apartments have more disposable income. The idea is that we fill the apartment building with these young professionals, divorcees, empty nesters, they walk into town and they spend their money at the local establishments. That's the goal.
I don't know, somebody that's spending that kind of money, uh, I, I think, again, you could be talking a couple, but, uh, a lot of people as far as the fact that, uh, um, by the time they, they, they spend that rent, uh, how much do they have as far as disposable income? Especially if they, they wind up with a boat, it isn't just the cost of the boat slips, the cost of maintaining the boat and any other toys that they have, uh, you know. You, you gotta be talking about, uh, your entire parking lot would be full of nothing but BMWs. I don't think that's gonna happen, so, that's all I've got, right?
Okay.
Alden, go ahead.
Hi Brett, thanks for the visit out there at the development, great job out there, it looks beautiful.
Thank you.
Um, tell me just a couple of quick things, uh, you guys have developed how many developments in your tenure with, with Linmark? Sorry, it's on, I'm really far away, I apologize. How many developments have, has Linmark completed at this point?
You mean within the past ten years?
Yeah, give me a number of what, how many active developments do you guys have in your inventory right now?
Uh, well, they're, okay, so you're asking two different questions. One is, um, how many developments have we completed in the past ten years? The other question is, how many assets are in the portfolio?
Correct, and that's where I'm getting to.
Right, so in terms of assets in the portfolio, it is over thirty thousand. Um, in terms of, uh, projects that have been completed in the past ten years, I would say it's over, uh, close to three hundred million. Um, uh, did that answer your question?
Um, yeah, I guess my, my last question for you would be of the developments you guys have put together, you mentioned that you, long-term, keep those assets.
Correct.
In the last ten years of the developments you've put together, have you sold any of those developments?
No.
So you, all of that is still in your inventory?
Correct.
Excellent, thank you.
No problem.
Any other questions by council?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, I just wanna clean up a couple items quick before we move on to public comment. First of all, the Tracy Cross studies, just for the public's, uh, information, Tracy Cross study's been, uh, referenced a couple of times. That was a, uh, an apartment study that the, uh, an apartment demand study that the city had concluded last year, right Doug? Yeah, it's in twenty-twenty, uh, just to identify if there was a demand for, uh, rental apartments in McHenry, and so that study's available if anyone wants to take a look at it. From a tax income and finance standpoint, I have an easy comment and then a harder one. The easier comment is that, uh, again, just for, uh, your information, TIFs are established for twenty-three years, and our TIF is actually nearing the end of life, its initial life, with only a couple of years left on it. And, uh, we're actually in the process of going through, to renew a TIF, or to, to extend a TIF, you can do it one time in the state of Illinois, and that's for a twelve-year period, you can only have, you can only get one extension on an initial twenty-three-year TIF, uh, for twelve years. And you have to go through a process to talk to the various tax and bodies involved with the TIF in order to get that extension. So we are actually going through that process right now. Um, if council gives us the go-ahead, uh, tonight, to go, again, not by vote, but by consensus, to move forward and bring the other redevelop, negotiating a redevelopment agreement with Linmark Group, certainly a part portion of that redevelopment group from the city's standpoint, and Linmark's is gonna be contingent on the TIF being extended. Because we're not gonna, we're not going to commit to anything financially without knowing the status of the TIF, nor, I doubt, is Linmark going to enter into an agreement, uh, on anything without knowing that there's going to be TIF incentive, whatever that TIF incentive may be, in, in an agreement. So I just wanted the, the public to be aware that we're probably looking at a spring timeframe. Uh, it has to be approved ultimately by the general assembly, and so, uh, again, we're working through that process right now. And then quickly, from a TIF standpoint, this is, this is like my understanding, how I would explain to Derek what a TIF is, so that's why, that's why I'm explaining it this way. Um, so, as some of you may know, a tax income and finance district, when it's established, I'll, I'll say, create the snapshot of the taxes, of the, of your tax bill at the time that the TIF is established. Any improvements, any improvements that are made within the TIF district, which is downtown is, and where you, where a lot of you live, in the, in the townhomes and in other areas on the Riverwalk, uh, in that district, TIF district, any increment in the value of property that comes back in the form of an increment or increase in taxes goes completely to the city of McHenry. So what it does is it, it does not go to the various taxing bodies, the school districts, and county, and everybody else. That TIF increment from the time it's established till the time it expires, that funding comes to the city of McHenry to be able to do public improvements in the downtown, like things that we've done on Miller Point, and streetscape improvements that we're talking about. It's also used for public, other public infrastructure projects within that TIF district, and it can also be used for incentivization of private developments in downtown on sites that may or not otherwise, or may be difficult to develop, or, uh, or just, uh, pro, projects that we would like to see within that TIF district. River Place was financed through TIF financing, uh, the, the row homes, uh, along Boone Creek were financed through TIF financing, and a lot of other projects were financed that way. And I've heard some comments, not necessarily tonight, but just about TIF in general, about, you know, well, you know, the, 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 my, the increment on my property, I don't want to go towards this specific project or that specific project. And, and you typically, what happens in a project like this, that site generates zero taxes right now. It's generated zero taxes for fifty years, n, no taxes are paid by anyone on that site. And so by being able to redevelop it, it all of a sudden goes from zero taxes generated to some increment of taxes generated, whether it's the ones, uh, projected by Linmark or some other development, that can then be used either to pay a TIF incentive, like is being requested in this case, and/or to. like is being requested in this case, and/or to go to other projects in the downtown to the way for that TIF. It's always the city staff's goal to be able to put together, you know, redevelopment agreements that are a benefit to the city of McHenry, that we can pay back that TIF increment as soon as we can in order to get to the stage where we can do other projects in the downtown. We just turned the corner on our TIF for a variety of reasons to have a positive, uh, positive cash flow starting last year or this year. And so I just wanted to clarify that, uh, for people because I get that question a lot and I have throughout my career in dealing with TIFs, on exactly what a TIF is, what it can be used for and can't be used for. And it's exactly for, uh, these types of projects, whether it's Linmark or somebody else, it's used for incentivization of private redevelopment.
Can I add on to that? Just, just as an example, I guess projects you would all know is like the Riverwalk Place Townhomes. That project, um, received seven hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars in TIF incentives. Uh, for extension of water mains down Wakegan to serve that project, for extension of sidewalks. Uh, new seawall was put in there as well as the boat slips. Um, River Place, the other, the mixed use building right on Green Street, that was, uh, received two million dollars in incentives. Um, l- largely the land and the demolition of the hospital, um, property acquisition was the biggest part of that. So, um, e- even probably other projects like the E.V. Brown, uh, building used to be a warehouse and now the Merlot Metro Supply, that was a smaller project, but still fifty thousand dollars went to that. Um, you know, overall, public dollars that's been invested into this, into the TIF district up to this point, is six point seven million dollars, uh, all from this TIF account. Um, all geared towards public improvements or redevelopments or incentives. So, and that includes, uh, you know, that includes the first phase of the Riverwalk and any, uh, addition, that was two point eight, oh, no, two point nine million dollars for the first phase of the Riverwalk. Um, so the most significant investment from the city due to the TIF district being in place. Let's help.
Yep, thank you both. All right, uh, before we- I'll leave that by. Yeah, just one thing I wanted to bring up and just, because this could wind up in some people's minds, and that's the fact that even though like all the taxes that come out of those townhouses that come to the city for the TIF, does not change what you pay for your property tax. In other words, your EAV, uh, equalized assessed value and everything else is set by the, the township assessor and all those tax percentages and everything else are just like anybody else. It's just what the city gets to come back to is, uh, is, is a, is a large amount. Just so that you know that it doesn't change what you're paying. Other than the fact that as new development like this could create, uh, more value to your property, which of course, then again, the higher your value of your property, it is the more tax you pay. Just so there was a clarity.
Thank you. Uh, before we open it up for a public comment, uh, Brad, you wanna say anything else before we open it up?
Uh, no, I'm good, thank you.
All right, thank you Brad.
Yep.
Once again, last chance for council, any questions, council? All right, so I would ask that everyone, uh, that comes up to the podium, one at a time, uh, please take your name and address for public record. Uh, we will have a three-minute, uh, time for each of you. Uh, please try, try not to be re, you know, try not to say the same thing the person said before you. Um, but, uh, I would ask that you be professional to the developer, to the council, to staff, uh, as you make your comments. These comments will be noted by our city administrator, also our clerk, uh, to make sure that we get these questions answered, uh, and get them back to, whether it's to you guys or to council during planning and zoning, or back to council, so. Um, all right, so we'll go ahead and open up for public comment. First person? Mr. Escudero?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Good evening, my name is Anthony Escudero. I am currently the president of Riverwalk Place Homeowners Association. Those are the townhomes that are on Glen Creek. Um, let me just start off by saying that when this gentleman talked about transient, residential, rental, um, we're definitely opposed to something like that. And we feel what is essential for that property is homeownership, whether it's a condo, a townhome or something. We have lived in our development since two thousand and five. We have lived through, uh, the, uh, unsightly smell of the, uh, the wastewater treatment plant, the development, and we're happy with the direction where it's go, it's going. But I have it on very good legal sources and developers that it is impossible to get this much money from HUD and FHA without Section Eight housing. It's impossible to be done. The federal regulations require it. So now you're talking about, you're talking about Section Eight housing, and I just don't see where these targeted residents exist when they need money to afford where they live and now you're gonna offer them an amenity like a boat and a boat slip, which they can't afford to use in the first place. I don't know how that, where that targeted resident is actually going to exist in the universe. And frankly, a lot of us, uh, use this word respectfully. We are offended by the consideration of a project that requires federal funding and Section Eight housing, which is exactly what's going to happen here. I want to get to some specifics and, uh, try to be brave, just so we put my glasses on. Um, okay, we're talking about six hundred square foot studio apartments. Again, how is somebody gonna afford a boat and a boat slip when they're probably sharing a six hundred square foot apartment? And that accounts for what, forty-two units? These targeted residents don't exist in the universe. And use a coin, I don't know how this project can stay afloat when they're looking for a targeted resident that doesn't exist. Land value. It, it just, it, it upsets me that probably the most valuable piece of property that the city has is even considering a proposal from land developers when they're offering a land acquisition of zero. I think you should've said, sorry fellows, we're not even gonna consider this until you come back with a number that we can deal with, okay? I think that's insulting to even consider an offer of zero. Second, five point six million dollars from our TIF, that's what they're looking for? We as homeowners, since two thousand and five, have paid three, approximately three point four million dollars in real estate taxes, of which I believe eighty percent of that goes into the TIF. And now you're even considering a proposal that gives away that kinda money? And I just recently got a text from a very good source that says the TIF is almost bankrupt. We don't have any money left. Because we've earmarked almost five hundred thousand to expand the Riverwalk. Again, I don't know why this proposal is even being considered at this point. Personally, and I think other people will speak as well, we appreciate everything that the city has done, all the improvements that have been made. We're extremely happy with the direction that it's going. But this kinda project over there, after all these years, is a failure. Okay, it's not gonna work, especially with what the gentleman talked about of extreme, increasing fuel costs, material costs. We're already looking at another project that isn't finished. Another parking structure that was promised and isn't delivered. And we're gonna have another ice origin. If it wasn't for Rich Isley came along and made a success out of that apartment complex at Wakegan and River, we have a horrible-looking structure over there. I know other people wanna speak, so I will end at that. Thanks very much for your listening and your consideration there.
Good evening, Valerie Bailey, thirty-four and thirteen, Wakegan. Um, first I wanna say thank you to Linmark for making a proposal on this property. As a previous city council member, the redevelopment of this area has been a top priority, um, even before I moved into my current residence on Wakegan Road. Um, you appear to be an excellent firm and have a great vision for what multifamily dwelling can be at its very best. With that being said, I have some really strong concerns about this project. Number one is traffic. We all know that Wakegan Road is what it is. There's really not any opportunity to improve or expand it. If we just based the information we have on one point five individuals per unit, we're looking at at least three hundred and thirty additional vehicles traveling Wakegan Road, not to mention guests, Uber drivers, DoorDash, people maybe going to the boat rentals. And unlike other projects that have been done by Linmark, and I tried to look at as many of them as I could, there is only one in and out access to this property, including firm occupancy vehicles, which this road has just never been built to sustain that type of traffic, nor were any of the developments that are there currently. Um, there's a lot of traffic for a block. Combine that with two schools being in the same block that experience heavy traffic at least twice a day. And if you're ever out there when there's a wrestling match, football game, there's a tremendous amount of traffic, it's going to make it extremely congested. I feel like it's gonna completely change the driving and living experience in addition to the safety of that entire area. I was also concerned about sustainability, um, and I was really happy that Sean asked the question about whether you let go of any properties. Um, I kinda find it a little bit of a stretch having, I work with a number of real estate agents and I've talked to a number of them just in the past few days. Um, concerned that you're ever gonna get to ninety percent, um, occupancy, but that's certainly your issue and if you retain the property, um, hopefully we won't end up in a situation where we're trying to figure out what to do with a development that either wasn't completed or isn't able to be maintained. I think that would be an absolute tragedy for not only the residents on Wakegan, but for the entire downtown area. And we all know we lose control once we decide on a development for this space. If we can't fill those apartments and it's not able to be managed the way we're hoping, um, we're all going to suffer. This is not nearly as important, but the plan for this project is trying putting the garbage and backup house utilities on the north end of the property directly facing Miller Point. A location that's become really our major tourist attraction in the way we're bringing new residents, um, in to show off the community. And it's the site of many of our community events. And while I do understand that the apartment residents will enjoy the south and east-facing views, the community at large is gonna be looking at the most unattractive aspect of this development, um, from the place we spend the most time at. Um, I just wanna say that when I was on council, we had discussed ownership in this property, talking about townhomes and condos. And, you know, that number of maybe a hundred units on that space seemed to be pretty manageable. Um, knowing that it was gonna be high-end because of the value of that property has really always been in everyone's mind. A hundred vehicles versus over three hundred vehicles a day is a very, very different discussion. Um, and while I'm really excited to see a proposal on the table and I really do hope that there's room to negotiate the size and scope of this project, um, we need to put something there that's really truly feasible for that area. Um, it's exciting to everybody, including the three real estate agents we have sitting on a council of seven members, um, to have a project proposal at all right now, that's something we've worked on for a very long time. But it does need to be the right proposal. I was disappointed to hear very little, um, from the developers about how this impacts the residents that are already in that immediate area. And there's going to be a tremendous impact with this amount of traffic. The amount of people that walk from the country club through East Campus, there are people constantly crossing Wakegan because that's where the Riverwalk is. And this just doesn't seem like a really safe or viable use of the property. So, thank you very much, and just thank you for bringing something to the table.
I really don't have a lot, my name's Rich Isley, Riverwalk Apartments. Uh, I'm the owner of property and, uh, deliver. And totally thank you for your carefulness, but I do not develop that voice, I do need to. Uh, a couple of questions I, I want everybody to think about. For this size property, for the type of return you're looking at, twelve percent return, they're gonna have to have a maintain a high interest rate, probably at least ninety-two, ninety-four percent on to retain that money and to cost it and get that done. That's not always easy. If the rents are requiring there, you're gonna have to be flexible because they're gonna have to fill it up. They're, to get that percentage return, they're gonna have to keep returning that, that money and to keep those properties rented. That means they'll have to lower rents at times, they're gonna have to rent you pretty much whatever you ha- have to do to get it done. That being said, it's a tough business. I grew, I, I was in this world, I used to manage, uh, maintenance and construction for seven hundred and ninety unit apartment complexes in all of the states. So, I have a little bit of knowledge what it takes to get this done, it's not that easy. So, once they get started, or what you, whatever you think about is, how are you gonna get this, what are they, how are you gonna get the rent done? How are you gonna keep it going? There's a lot of money involved and they're gonna have to get their returns, so I don't know, whether it's raise rents, renting to other people, they're gonna do whatever you guys do to get it done. We have to think about what's best for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you everyone for their time. Um, real quick, no, I, your proposal, I saw the area for the parking garage and everything. My, my main concern was with sixty boat slips around the outside, and I think you said one point two parking spaces per unit. Um, there was no parking on that facility at all. I'm wondering where all those, if you have twenty boat slips, forty boat slips that are rented out, leased out, where those people are gonna park, where friends, neighbors, the people who work there are gonna park. So that was, that was just my concern. I wanna go after those guys next time.
So, what is your name? I'm sorry, can I-
Oh, Brian Boccie, thirty-four, eighteen, Wakegan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
City Council, Mayor Jetton, thanks for having us. My name is Dennis Smith. I've lived at thirty-four, twenty-two Wakegan Road for almost twelve years. Looking back, myself and my family have certainly benefited personally from the historical development of McHenry Riverwalk area. Of all the waterfront lands and the vast river and the chain of lakes, McHenry Riverwalk is the most desirable and highly valuable, as, as you all know. The main comparison in developing the land available is one Wheeling, at over three hundred units, in comparison. Proposed here is two hundred and eight units, but McHenry's not Wheeling, as I can do, standing close to resembling any of the other communities that Linmark has developed in. For one example, one Wheeling has infrastructure. It sits on Dundee Road, which has six lanes in the area directly to the north, a major train station. It's just west of I two ninety-four and eight line high, and eight lane highway. It's not far east of Route fifty-three, which is another major thoroughfare. Traffic into the proposed development is of course Route thirty-one, one lane in each direction, Route one twenty, two lanes. Green Street, a side street in Wakegan Road. The name Wakegan Road is misleading. The term road meets somebody's imagination, which is substantial. This is not the case in McHenry. Wakegan Road is a small side street, fairly large enough to handle the existing traffic flow. The existing housing, marina, the electric contracting business, retirement community, which by the way, has multiple emergency visits from the front of the apartment on a daily basis. But especially from the students and parents of McHenry East High School. In which I believe a development of this size would pose a significant safety hazard. Certainly a traffic analysis and neighborhood impacts that should be performed before considering development of any type in such a special and limited access area of McHenry. Your presentation was great. Their history, solid. The previous properties they developed, the financing, etc., great. But I haven't heard of any studies having been performed in their plan. Traffic, neighborhood impact, infrastructure requirements, nothing. There's a lot missing here in the presentation. I believe I speak for many from the Riverwalk area of McHenry. We are proud of the Riverwalk and its historical development. We believe further development and extension of the Riverwalk area in downtown McHenry is desirable. But an incredibly oversized apartment development. In lieu of a reasonably sized development of owned properties at the end of a dead-end street like Wakegan Road, a narrowing side street, and on such a valuable piece of property, it's just simply way too big and unweldable. In my opinion, what I'd really like the city council to consider is setting up an additional RFP in an effort to find something more fitting for the area. Thank you for hearing me and us. Thank you.
Can you please spell your last name?
F I N T.
Thank you. You got that, Rich?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any others? Last opportunity for public comment. Oh, hold on, sorry.
Oh, wait, you go ahead, go ahead.
My name is Heather Smith. I live in Eastwood Manor. I've been in Marine Service for twenty-three years. I just wanna make a couple points here that when you look up McHenry and do a Google search, it says a boat building industry flourished, marine recreation still remains important. For decades, McHenry took very seriously its title as the gateway to the chain of lakes. And this is still evident today, and the city's motto is part of the factor. When this was being presented to you, I did not hear one word about boat slips, the sixty-five slips that are there right now. All I heard was apartments- All I heard was apartments and money. So, McHenry is very important to me and to everybody behind me, and being that it is the heart of McHenry and the heart of the Fox River, these slips are very, very important. And this is just way too big to be here, and it needs to be, like everybody else, something smaller, and something that's going to add to the Riverwalk.
Hello, folks.
Oh, sorry.
Forgive me because this is not my forte, but my name's Steve Distazio. I live on the existing Riverwalk. I'm sure these gentlemen are very good at what they do, and I applaud them for their successes. That being said, I thoroughly agree with this gentleman, Mr. Glass, that I think that a rental program on that land that is so desirable, to have a rental program instead of a vested interest is a mistake. Again, I applaud these gentlemen, their presentation was very good. I'm sure they're great at their successes, and I wish them continued success, but this is not the place for this type of atmosphere. The streets are too narrow, it's gonna be very, very congested, you're dealing with the schools, as you've heard in the past, the old folks home, so on and so forth. Eaton Marine is a very active place, especially be it every spring and of course every fall when people are trying to get their boats taken care of, serviced either for going in the water, excuse me, or out of the water. Again, I applaud you as the mayor for trying to put, keep McHenry on the map and create more successes for it, and I applaud these gentlemen. But again, this is not the atmosphere or the environment for this kind of a project. Thank you very much.
Any others? Okay. I want to thank all of you for coming out, obviously hearing what you have to say is important for the council staff and for Landmark to hear. So, once again, you know, if the council wishes to move forward with due diligence and the process tonight, it is not a vote, it's just a straw poll just to see where council feels on this. And at that point, we'll communicate along the way with you. We'll make sure that, you know, Ross and Cody and anyone else on the staff will definitely, you know, keep you in the loop as well. Anyone that would like to talk to me, I'm always available on my cell phone. If you'd like to go to Wheeling One just to have a look, I'd be willing to go with you. So, I think it's important to at least check it out. I'm not saying supportive or not supportive of this project, but I think it's important before, just like the apartments we did behind Aldi, right? Everyone gets up, and I'm not saying this is you guys, all right? You guys have valid points, but to get up in uproar without seeing the project. I think it's important to have a visual of the project, and it might even get you saying, "This is why we don't want it," but I think it's important to at least check out the project. And that goes for council as well, for those that have not seen the project yet. So, I hope that helps. We'll go to council for any council comments at this time. Alvin Sandy, go ahead.
Give me your exact, what's the definition of moving forward for tonight?
So, the goal for tonight was to have the presentation and get a consensus from council on whether or not staff should move forward and putting together redevelopment agreements, negotiating, I keep saying putting together, but it's really negotiating. Because a lot of the points that have been brought up tonight are gonna be the topic of negotiation, the land value, the TIP incentive, any studies that would have to be done that we would need to see in terms of impact. Those are all part of the negotiation process. Tonight is purely a review of the presentation and the product, and then that would have to come back to council at the time that some draft is put together to both parties' satisfaction. Would have to come back before council for review and approval or denial.
Okay. And, sorry, clarification, would you make approval or denial as far as approving this project or?
The redevelopment, the redevelopment agreement. So, the redevelopment agreement would have all the terms in it in terms of property, the property, the number of units, any design changes, number changes, any of that, and what have, and what have to come back to it. The redevelopment agreement really has the meat of the TIP, the conveyance of the property to a developer based on the conceptual plan that they put forward. Still, it's gonna be a PUD. Go ahead. I mean, there's still a PUD process that has to go back and on.
Yeah. Well, okay. Did I identify the terms of the conveyance of property and what type of development's gonna go there? Does this, would this mean some exclusivity to Landmark and RFP timeframe is null and void right now?
Right. It's over. This isn't the developer that we have before. So, if we move forward, it will be Landmark as developer of record and to redevelop, put together redevelopment agreement with them.
And, yeah, we could move forward on something that if the RFP, RT, TIP, sorry, TIP extension does not get approved by the other taxing bodies, and I'm not gonna put words in Brad's mouth, but potentially it's the deal's gone.
Right. I mean, in turn, you don't, I mean, Brad doesn't have to, he can speak if he wants to, but we're not gonna bring any agreement before council to approve with terms in it to go beyond the weight of the TIP that we have now. So, it's gonna be spring before any redevelopment agreement comes back before you, or at least goes into effect. I mean, we may bring it back before then, but it's gonna be contingent on the extension of the taxing from a finance district.
Okay. And because of the points I just brought up, the TIP extension, and we are, today we are closed on RFP timeframe, which-
It was over September fourth.
I understand that. Okay. And if at some point we need to do this again, we can always open up another RFP if council wants to.
Right. If we choose not to move forward with Landmark, yes.
Because, you know, I see it tonight as, I'm not comfortable, one person, I'm not comfortable moving forward because there is no extension in place on the TIP. The RFP is closed for right now, could potentially be reopened. And for better or for worse, and I don't know where to draw this, I'm not, I don't know to point a finger, but to have one proposal come through on timeframe that we had with this RFP is, it just, I'm lost because it just makes no sense to me because of this piece of property that we've actually, you know, raised and now it's, you know, something to look at when it was, you know, what you said earlier, Derek, you know, a central wastewater treatment line for fifty or sixty years. With those points, I just, I'm just one person that I just can't be comfortable moving forward with this one proposal. But I will tell, I will say to Brad and his people, thank you very much for the presentation. And I am going out to visit. I, you know, this is tonight, and you want, you wanna comment, you wanna straw poll, that's my straw poll. Thank you.
Thank you. No, we cannot pre-gauge back and forth, sorry. Alvin Harding? Alvin Harding? Could be a call.
You need to go an extra quarter minute.
Um, Alvin, did I?
So, what, Derek said we're three or four meetings out before we even make an agreement. Well, spring is-
Can you hear me?
Yeah. Alvin Harding, hold on, what you're hiding? Yeah, I don't hear you now.
So, so, right, council says, yes, this is the developer that want to move forward. The next step is for staff to negotiate a redevelopment agreement. It has all the terms in it, the property, advanced development, all that, to bring back before council. And how long that takes is how long that takes. But the contingency will be from the city standpoint that the TIP get extended.
Hey, Troy, just tell them that I turned it down. All right, thanks. Um, Alvin, sorry. I don't think I have any questions at this time. Alvin, up?
Yeah. One of the things is, as far as tying up these dollars into the TIP, just so the council understands that at any time, future councils can shut up the, immediately shut up the TIP at any time. And we would wind up, we've got an agreement, depending on how it's written, that could put in some legal problems as far as trying to cut the TIP off early. So, I've got a lot of reservations about that. I believe that, yeah, there's negotiation procedures that we used to negotiate with the unions for the employees years back, and the system worked out very well. We were, we gave staff certain criteria, and they'd go back into negotiations, and then they'd come back with what was spoken and what was not agreed upon, and come back to council for more input, and so there was a little bit more involvement with the council through the whole process of the agreement, and not just where all of a sudden it comes back and they want us to sign an agreement. I just think to some extent, the more times that it has come back to the council, the more times we see it, the better a project can be. Although, I will state right now that I doubt if you'll receive a yes for rental units out here. I still feel that it needs to be owner occupied. That's all I-
I don't think they want to engage, but Tom just, they can't hear, you can't get their mics, so you can't get to hear. Yeah, sorry, all right. So, if anyone, just make sure your mics are on and speak loudly. Alvin Harding? Alvin Harding?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, there you go. Got you.
Can you hear me?
Yeah. Alvin Harding, can you give your input, any comments, questions?
Um, yeah, I, it was, with me or your citizens, you know, it's, they kind of, if they're concerned, I, I do think we can redevelop that property. But I'm feeling that, it's just, I'm leaning for the owner occupied office, and I don't know they've put out some great properties in Wheeling and Miller Point and other places, but I know we haven't had a such active study yet, and I do think that is gonna be a problem. I do have my reservations with this, with this project after, you know, our potential investment in this project. That's all I have to say at this time.
So, Alvin Harding, would you like to move forward with due diligence and discuss, have staff work up an agreement, or are you saying, are you not voting, but are you saying no to that?
Not voting, but are you saying no to that? I'll just keep that.
Can you ask him? So, Alvin Harding, are you, do you want staff to continue down the due diligence process? Or do you want, I guess, to start, start over and go back to drawing board with an RFP process?
I think it's kind of like start over.
All right. All right. Alvin Sandy, you're a no. Alvin McGlenn?
No, I don't move forward. I did have one question for staff. Did we, even though they might not admit it, have there been any other developers that have been interested in the project here?
There's been plenty interested, but none that has submitted, nothing that anybody has submitted. And again, we want to see the process twice of an RFP.
Alvin, sorry?
I would like to move forward with the negotiation. Again, knowing that it's a negotiation, final details would still have to come back to us.
Alvin, do I?
This is a tough call for me. I love going out there. Place is first-class out there, the do seems to be first-class, but I kind of gotta go with the residents on this. I don't, I don't know if it's best shit right there. Maybe if it was half the size of the project, but it's a lot going on out there. I'd have to go with the residents. Thank you.
No, Brett, obviously, part of these negotiations is the size, is the parking, is all those types of things. So, do keep that in mind, too, this, you know, this is the proposal, right, Brett? There is those negotiations and conversations of the size of the project and stuff like that, right? So, once again, now, you know, we have the votes of not coming back, that also puts in, you know, it could have had an opportunity, in my opinion, to at least have that discussion with them about the concerns and having that negotiation, but at this time, it is from the council members, it's a no-go and moving forward this project. So, okay? All right. Can I get a motion to- Okay. Alvin, sorry?
I'll make that motion.
Uh, Alvin, for a second?
I will second.
Alvin Strach?
Yes.
Alvin Sandy?
Yes.
Alvin McGlenn?
Yes.
Alvin Harding?
Yes.
Alvin Devine?
Yes.
Yes.
All right.
Alvin Devine.
Thank you everyone for coming. Thank you.